Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, April 25th School Committee Meeting to order. This evening, again, we are going to vote to approve the FY23 budget. The numbers have not changed since the meeting we had on April 11th, which was also our public hearing. I want to give everyone the opportunity to speak before I begin going through the articles and requesting motions and seconds. And obviously, since we're virtual, we'll have to do a roll call vote. Before I open it up to the committee, I just want to say, again, I will be voting in favor of this budget, not because I think that it's sufficient. You know, obviously, I believe the school department could use more. But this is the budget that the mayor has indicated the town can currently support. And as part of the charter, we need to move and approve budget forward now so that the mayor can present the complete town budget, including the school department, to the town council. So with that, does anyone, I'm going to open it up to the committee, does anyone want to speak or ask any questions?
Madam Chair.
Mick, of course.
I'd just like to first say that I think the budget that's been presented by Superintendent Lee and the administration has been well thought out. And I think that it's complete in the sense that if we look at our class sizes on the elementary level, they're probably the lowest they've been since the 90s, where we had a decline in enrollment. We have a number of students that are not in these classrooms. We have a number of students that might have gone to private school, but right now, based on the numbers we're seeing, we're seeing probably the lowest ratios that we've seen in a long time. And just as an example, there's some classrooms that have 15:1 ratios, which is phenomenal. So in addition to that, I think that based on some of the issues that COVID has created, the behaviorists that we're investing, I believe, about $400,000 a year in right now are going to be helpful for the students. And maintaining, our fifth grade has left the majority of our elementary schools. We still maintain reading specialists at every school and math specialists at every school. Last year, we had talked about eliminating some of the math specialists, but we restored those numbers last year by moving money over from other departments to make sure that we could do that. And there's also some additional help and guidance at BHS and East. So I think that our administration has done a great job in maintaining the highest level of education, and I commend them for that. And I think that this budget is a very strong budget for our students. And I just want to thank the superintendent for working so hard to make sure that our students get the best that they can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Mick, of course.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Devon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, first of all, I want to apologize for not making the last meeting. I have some health issues that are pretty well documented over the last few years. I think it's important for people to realize a few things. Madam Chair, you and I have been on this for, you know, some, more than 10 years. I don't think there was ever, except for maybe once or twice, we were happy with the numbers that we were going forward with. I do, I do believe it might have been 2000, I want to say 14 or 15, where we had so much money that we went by maintenance of effort. We went all the way down to, you know, I think it was two or three, we were able to, shall we say, put specialists back. I do remember a guidance counselor, another guidance counselor in the South Middle School. I think people have to understand that we have to work with the number. Very rarely are we happy with that number. If someone's got a bunch of money and they want to give it to us, hey, I'm all for it. I do know that last year, myself, George Kukoris, and Carla Saros sat on the Financial Subcommittee, and what we did is we took the monies that we were getting from the state, cut it in half, enrolled some of that to this year, knowing that, you know, you can't, shall we say, take a budget, I'm sorry, a town economically, shut it down and start it back up. I'm here tonight because I want to hear the reasons why some of the people voted no. It's, I believe that I come to these meetings when...
We just lost you. Can you hear Tom? Because I just lost this audio.
I can't hear him either.
I just lost your audio, Tom.
Your audio dropped out.
Tom, can't hear your audio.
And I believe you're frozen a little bit, too.
Yep, you're frozen as well.
Well, that's a good thing.
You're kind of back.
Well, I think you guys got the gist of what I was saying.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Tuffy, do you, do you want to speak as well?
I do.
Okay.
So, I, I have not, I am not changing my vote. As a member of the school committee, our, we really don't put together the budget that that is the superintendent and the, and he tries to balance it with the administration. We can only provide oversight, and if we don't agree with the budget, our only option is to pay, is to vote no. So we have received an unprecedented amount of COVID relief money, the SRS3 money, which was passed in March of 21, is designed to support, was designed to support the safe reopening and sustaining safe operations of schools, meeting the students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs resulting from the pandemic. What I see is, as a new school committee member, but someone who, who taught in Braintree for over 30 years, my first day teaching in Braintree was in 1979 as a sub, so I've been around for a long time. What I see is that the middle school math connections classes have been eliminated. Those math connection classes allowed students who weren't necessarily on IEPs but who struggled in math to keep up with their peers, and they were very successful. We were written up in a national magazine because our students did so well when we implemented them. I see that there's, the extra period for high school science labs has been eliminated. Last year, we eliminated remedial reading classes in the elementary and middle school levels. We eliminated a seventh grade writing workshop, an essential class, because seventh graders take the ELA Composition MCAS test. And so the seventh grade teachers have had to take up the slack for the lack of that writing workshop class. This year, I see that math strategies and math workshops have been removed from the high school next year, and we have been told that no additional guidance and school adjustment counselors, no additional reading specialists are going to be added in this current budget proposal. What I also see is that the town administration has not, has not applied for all the money it is eligible for. It, we have money from Norfolk County, and there are four categories that towns can apply for that, for grants, and Braintree has only applied for revenue replacement, which gives Other towns, for example, Needham. Needham is, Needham is getting, is it also a non-entitlement unit like Braintree? Their county amount is 6 million compared to Braintree's 7.2 million. Needham, if you look on their website, they are funding, using, funding COVID-19 direct impact contact, contact tracings. They are hiring an epidemiologist, they're hiring a public health nurse, they are hiring mental and behavioral health staffing and service, and providing services. They have technology improvements, they have small business, a small business grant program in addition to the water, sewer, and other infrastructure programs. Randolph, who is also a non-entitlement unit like Braintree, is, is applying for multiple Norfolk County grants. And in addition to that, they just received a million dollar grant from the federal government to put in place a community health clinic at their high school that will service students and families and, and provide mental health services and counseling right at the high school. We have made no effort, that I can see, to apply for this unprecedented amount of money in any sort of, in any of the eligible ways other than revenue replacement. So I, I can't, I cannot in good conscience vote for a budget that does the exact opposite of what the COVID relief money is designed to do. We are supposed to be providing services to our students who lost learning time, had difficulty keeping up academically. We are supposed to be providing mental health services. We know that, that mental health issues have increased in our young people, and we are not doing that with this budget. And I think that unless the town is applying for all the eligible grants that it can, I, I don't see why this, this budget should pass.
Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Tuffy. Mick, of course, second time. Go ahead.
First of all, I just want to clarify that we have a number of computer technicians to help our students on the tech side. We retained math specialists. We still have reading specialists at every one of our elementary schools, increased guidance. And as far as mental health, behavioralists, guidance counselors. So I think that, you know, I think that Superintendent Lee has done a good job with that. In regards to the county money, as mayor, it's my responsibility to work through all of the funding sources that we have available to us. And just for your peace of mind, I will tell you that we are addressing every aspect of the funding. We've been working with the auditors, we've been working with the county, and continue to work with them. And yes, we have applied for the revenue replacement. We have a number of other areas that we are working on right now. It's better to have an understanding of what you're going to be approved for and what works, and that's what we're working towards. And there's a number of things that, some that came out later on during the final rule, there's over 400 pages of documents in regards to what you're eligible for. But rest assured, myself and my staff are working with the county, and we are going to utilize every dollar that has been allocated for us, and we will continue to work with them. And if you'd like personally, I'll let you know as we apply for items so that you can feel greater comfort in making votes in the future on the budget. But as we do, you will see it. And when we're, when we're through with this year's allotment, which is half of the 7-plus million, we will start immediately applying for the other money. So just to clarify, we are and have been working on looking at all of the other things outside of revenue replacement, because under the final rule, we are not eligible to receive anything more than the $750. At this point, it may change, but just so you know, I am working on that, and I'll be more than happy to give you updates as we move forward. I think it's great that you have this interest in it and that you have a good understanding as to some of the areas that we can utilize the money, and look forward to making our applications. And like I said, we'll give you whatever information that, that you would like to receive and keep that communication with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mick, of course. Does anyone else want to speak or ask any questions?
For the chair.
Ms. Gobler, ma'am.
Thank you. I wasn't going to ask a question, but since Mick Kukoris made the statement about the reading specialists and adjustment counselors, I just wanted to ask Superintendent Lee what I asked him last week about this budget, and I just want him to confirm, because we had talked about in the resolution, that we didn't feel that this was adequately funded because of the lack of literary, the literacy specialists and programs, the math specialists and programs, the writing instruction at the middle school level, guidance counselors and licensed adjustments counselors and SEL elementary staff. And Mr. Lee, can you confirm that this budget is not putting those positions back in? Isn't that correct?
So there are no new positions relative to the, what you identified in this budget. However, from last year's budget, as the mayor had mentioned, we brought back a math specialist for every elementary school, there's a reading specialist for every elementary school. You know, as we went through the process of looking to, in essence, getting to a number that we thought the town could support, you know, part of the trade-off was that class size that the mayor talked about versus different positions that we might want given the southern climate. And, you know, to get to the appropriate number, you, in essence, you could, so we felt that the small class sizes with the teachers, being able to work more closely with students in a lot of ways was more beneficial to the kids than in addition to another school adjustment counselor or another reading or math specialist. So no, there are no new positions in those areas in this budget, but what we were able to do is maintain those very small class sizes, believing that will get emotional support and mental health support for our students via that.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And I do, I do have a statement. Any budget is a moral statement of priorities. A budget reflects what we are as a culture and as a community and what we value. It tells us mathematically what areas or issues of people are most important to the creators of the budget and which are the least important. I believe that the budget is one of the biggest responsibilities that we take on as elected officials. Unfortunately, at this time, I do not feel that this is adequate movement to align our moral documents with the students and the community we serve. As discussed during our last meeting and by the vote of the resolution, the proposed FY23 budget will drastically limit the Braintree Public School system's ability to provide essential academic support and mental health services needed to address significant learning gaps and social, emotional needs of our students. Knowing the severity of our fiscal constraints in Braintree, how can we view the budget process with a lens of educational equity and justice? As elected officials, there are times when we need to take a stand, no matter the fallout. And while I respect the work of the school administration, my colleagues on the school committee and the mayor, I cannot support the budget. At the end of the day, I have to vote the way I best believe supports the students and the community that I serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gobler, ma'am. Mr. Lynch, I'm Ms. Saros. Any other comments or questions?
I'll just put my two cents in. I'm, I'm going to vote for the budget. You know, Dr. Lee, school administrators, thank you for working hard on this. My big thing goes back to, we, we shut down the economy, you know, two years ago, we shut down the schools, there's, there's fallout for that. We could do everything perfectly, and everyone knows, it doesn't mean we're going to get all the money we want. I mean, Tom already said, you know, the past 10 years, you don't have the exact number you want every year, all you can do is kind of work with what you have. And I know Dr. Lee has said that they can manage with this budget, so I'm, I'm good with that. Yeah, just, I'm, I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Ms. Saros, did she dial in?
I believe she's on the call and she's...
Hello. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything. I just wanted to make sure I heard you.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Through the chair, thank you. I just want to make the statement, you know, listening to everyone, I appreciate, I, I really appreciated knowing I was there last year, seeing that we were having a show at fall, we ended up with more money from the state. Budget is always a horrible process. I, listening to Kelly and Kathy, I fully agree with what they're saying, and I am not in favor of the planned budget. And I just, hopefully, as a town, we can look at the whole town budget and how we spend money and go from there. So that's all I want to say right now.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Saros. So everyone's had the opportunity to speak at least once.
I would like, I have one clear clarification, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Tuffy. Go ahead, second time.
So through the chair, to the mayor, I, I just want to clarify that the money that was used to fund the math specialists at the elementary school last year, what was the OPEB money, the other post-employee benefit money, which has not been funded by the town for two years, that provides retiree benefits, it affects our bond rating if it's not funded consistently. So I, I think that while it was good that you added back those math specialists, perhaps using OPEB money, two years, not funding OPEB for two years in a row was not the best choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tuffy.
To the chair.
Mick, of course.
This year, we will be funding it, and our bond rating, since I began, is the same bond rating that was prior to becoming mayor, and it's a AA+. And that's what it is and where it stands, so, but we will be funding those areas at the time. I felt it was more important for us to have the math specialists reinstated. And once again, bond rating has remained strong. And by the way, you know, we look at where we focus, where the town focuses, a lot of its efforts, and that is in the schools. You know, if you look at our brand-new East building, you know, renovated on one side and brand-new addition, it's a brand-new building essentially. And the fact that we are funding through a debt exclusion, a new South Middle School, we've got our priorities in order. And we are spending, the taxpayers are paying for brand-new buildings, and they're for the schools. But as far as our ability to borrow, we borrowed $50 billion at 1.97% because of our bond rating for 25 years, so pretty proud of that. And just to clarify, we are funding the $300-plus thousand into that account again, in, in this budget period coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mick, of course. Okay, so with that, everyone has, has had the opportunity to speak, so I am going to now go into reading each one of the 10 articles. So I'm going to ask for a motion and a second for each article, and then we will do one vote at the end. And again, it'll have to be roll call for all 10 articles and the total budget. So with that, I will begin. Article one, Elementary Schools Administration, $1,488,086.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I have the motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Article number two, Middle School Administration, $997,058.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Article number three, High School Administration, $1,412,346.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Article number five, Curriculum Development and Professional Development, $266,657.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I have motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Excuse me. Article number four, Curriculum and Instruction, $56,881,405.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Article number six, Building and Grounds Maintenance and Utilities, $5,46,594.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Article number seven, General Education Transportation, $1,538,937.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Article number eight, Athletics, $634,503.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Article nine, All Other District-Wide Services, $5,608,385.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Article number 10, Technology and Data Processing Tech Department, $1,796,992.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. And then the total FY2023 Braintree Public Schools budget, $73,472,068.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. All right, we'll do a roll call. Again, this is for all 10 articles and FY23 budget total. Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Mick, of course.
Aye.
Ms. Gobler, ma'am.
No.
Ms. Tuffy.
No.
Ms. Saros. Ms. Saros. Ms. Saros, we want to hear you. Go ahead.
Can you?
Yes.
No.
No. And the chair votes yes, so the budget passes.
You didn't ask me.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Devon, I thought I asked you first. Mr. Devon.
I'm for it. I'm, I'm in the affirmative.
Oh, thank you. Apologies.
No worries.
Again, the all 10 articles and the budget passes by a vote of four to three. I also want to mention at the bottom of our, of the articles, the superintendent is authorized to transfer up to $100,000 between any of the above categories during the current fiscal year. In an emergency, the superintendent is authorized to transfer additional funds with consultation and approval of the school committee chairperson. The school committee will be informed of any emergency fund transfers at the school committee meeting, at the next school committee meeting. Okay, I just wanted to add that as well. That is all that is on our agenda this evening. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon.
Second.
A second by Mr. Lynch. Roll call vote again. Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Mr. Devon.
Aye.
Mick, of course.
Aye.
Ms. Gobler, ma'am.
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy. Ms. Tuffy.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.